Thank you. We got a good laugh. All right. March twenty second, twenty twenty-three work session. All right. Chad, why don't you start us off with the, uh, what are we working on? The white sheet first and then the line sheet or what do you want to do?
We're gonna go ahead and review the current goals first. Talk about some of those. Then we'll go through, um, some of the goals that I have identified, uh, that is attached to your table. It's the one just under dated, huh? There you go. Some of the things that we'll be working on, uh, that I've worked with the departments, we talked about, and these are something that And then the last page that's in there is the planning commission goal sheet as well. And I wanted you to also have that in your hand. And hopefully get some language here. But essentially, we'll do the role of the council goals because we have them now. We'll talk about, you know, working well, didn't. Um, and highlight some of the things that we want to continue on with and then possibly some things that we want to get rid of. This year, as far as goals go for the city staff, what we would like to really concentrate on for this upcoming year is city operations. We've been through a lot of things over the last couple of years. Um, you know, through COVID, through price, through, you know, finding people, all the things that we've been working on. Um, but now with all these changes and the additional people in Gearheart and some of the pressures that we're receiving, uh, we would like to spend some time making sure that our operations is efficient as well. Um, we talked a little bit about this in a set situation where we were talking a, about the budget and about, um, job descriptions. Those are gonna have to change a little bit to make us more efficient and to cover what it is that we're doing. And help us consider what the future might look like. We're also gonna have to look at salary schedules, and this is in this. But those are the kind of things that I would like to mostly concentrate on this year. But the council, you folks are the guiding light here. And we also need to have a brainstorming session about some of the things that you would like to see the city do. My job today is to not sit here and throw, um, dirt on any of these ideas, as complicated as they might be or expensive as they might be. The job today is to get some of these issues out so that the staff can go back and start looking at what the process would look like. And starting putting some dollars to some of these ideas. So that way, when we're developing the budget, we can do a better job developing that as well. The other thing is, we will bring this back to you or report to you in future council meetings about some of the things that we found so that you can come along with us during that process. Um, so the first thing that I thought we'd want to do is review the current goals that, um, actually, this is a work session, so we don't have to be as formal here. This is a conversation going back and forth, and I think that that's most important. So with that, is there any questions before we start? Okay. Let's start with the council goals, projects, and this came in your packet, this one with the green on the top. It is kind of divided out into some of the different, um, departments, but this will change throughout this process. So what we have here is, uh, in the public works area, we've identified water meter rear, or excuse me, water meter replacements, um, which is included hiring a company to get those installed, which also includes after that a database update that we want to work on and would also include meter purchases. Uh, to report on this, we're about seventy-five percent, that might be a little high, but it's close. We have, um, still some meters that need to get on the ground and just for your education again, these meters are more efficient. They'll actually report the water that's going in, it'll help us with our comprehensive, or excuse me, our water conservation plan. And we would like to get all the meters, uh, that are in our style. And in that way, uh, we can also do wireless metering. So that's about seventy-five percent. Um, we have had very little luck in finding a company that can come to help us. But I think that that's been pretty true with anything that we would try to get into these days. You know, with shortages of staff and, and, uh, the cost of things. But I feel like things are starting to loosen up a little bit. Maybe getting back to a little bit more normal. People are starting to staff up, the economy is doing fairly good. So we're feeling pretty good that we should be able to find a great. But that's a, that's a major public works project that we have. Any questions about that?
And the water meter replacement is what seventy-five percent, everything else is zero, right?
Um, the higher company would be, you know, that's how we got this far, but current, to have a current, um, company, Brad Zero, but we're looking. Uh, database update is something that's continually ongoing, something that Justine, especially, and Christie have been working on to clean up our database as it is with our current system. That's not the replacing of the database, I'll talk about that a little bit. But that's constantly going on, maybe, you know, there was quite a few things that were kind of messed up in there, but. Um, and then the meter purchases, actually, we've got a lot of the meters that we need to replace already. Um, we already purchased many of them. Um, we'll need to purchase a few more, but I'll come to the council, uh, with that in a future meeting.
So how long have you? We've, we have staff on public works that are capable of replacing the meters.
And we do. But mostly on maintenance issue. You know, as meters need to get replaced because they're broken, and homes, of course, are gonna get many years. Um, or any other opportunity that we have to change out these groups. But it's not enough to get all that done. To get it done, City of Warrenton did the same thing that we want to do. And the City of Warrenton was able to get the entire city done in one fell swoop with the contractor that they were using. And we have been in contact with that contractor as well, but they haven't been so available yet. But yes, we, we constantly.
It's a capacity issue. Gas, spend all, all day, every day, replacing meters.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm sure we get scheduled sometimes and get them freed up and to do that, it really is a capacity issue. And with the building that's been going on this year, and all the stuff. Um, every lot it seems like that's being built upon right now is the most challenging lot left around town. So they've been very busy. So they'll continue to work on it, but I don't think they've done it in time enough, man, or neither has Mark.
Well, is it that we don't have enough, we don't have enough volume to call in the contractor that Warrenton was using, or?
Maybe. I mean, that was, we were able to squeeze in a couple of times between the cities, but there are a lot larger cities that employ these guys and they come through a train. You know, one person does this, the next person does that, the next person does this, and it was done, and they recorded the information and they give it to us. And it worked well when we had them, they replaced a lot, probably fifty percent of our meters almost. So careful reangling for them is to come up with a good plan.
And you and Mark are working on that?
Mark is working on it, you know, all the system anyway he can, but, you know, we're, we're pushing it. Okay.
Before we move on, I have a question. Did the company, the database company ever will get back to you or maybe?
For training? They've been, they've been. And they've gotten back to us with two types of training. One type of training is where they come, send somebody down and, which is what I would prefer. But it's about six to eight thousand dollars. It's about two thousand dollars a day. Because they don't have any local, so they have to fly them in and then we have to pay salary. Plus, we have to pay all the expenses, plus they have to come down. But they do have some online Zoom type of things.
Is it something we could send you to cheaper?
I'm not sure that they. Maybe. He thought that, that what, after talking to him, he thought that the Zoom would be good enough for us. So where I was planning on.
So when you say online, you're talking about Zoom?
Yeah, where they actually log in with you and look at things. And I, he came down and, and he was at the conference, um, for, in Seaside, and he stopped by just to say hi. I had told him and shown him, because a lot of the times it's me showing him a paper that says, how do I make this work over here in the system? Like, why is this happening? And I told him, I said, you can't get that on Zoom. I would have to say, okay, well, could you hold my, go scan it? Because it kind of evolves as you're talking to them. So, yeah, anyway, we're, I'm working on it. I'm hoping May-ish.
Okay. And is our call, the conversation was that Astoria is struggling also? Was there, I mean, and it, you know, way that we could combine? With Astoria?
And maybe Warrenton, I did not reach out to the other city. Yeah, I haven't reached out to the other cities, so that might be something that we could do, yeah.
Okay.
Piggyback on that a little bit. We, um, were talking about last year about potentially getting some new software and the costs of some of those things, even up into sixteen, seventy thousand dollars for them. Um, and I talked to Justine about this, um, a little bit, and we're not ready to move forward with a new software program right now. I think that what the work that Justine and the team is doing to update the database and get things in there correctly, to make sure to get rid of all of the, the chaff and keep the wheat. We need to do more of that, and that's just gonna take time. You know, through time of working with the residents, things that come up, and when we have time to be able to practice on those things. So we're not quite ready to move forward with a new database because we want to clean this one up. We don't want the garbage in, garbage out problem. So we're holding back a little bit on that, making the system work. It's not the most efficient, but it is working right now. And we're getting more and more comfortable with it. And, um, we'd like to report more in the future about making a change, but not right yet.
And we, we received no feedback on the report that we submitted? That we approved and we submitted? Conservation, water conservation report, or we thought that some of our issues might be called out?
No.
Yeah.
No.
We heard that, and it's fine. We have no, oh.
Yeah, there was no.
They understood the issues that we were having and, and he was accurate when he said that this isn't, what we're facing isn't unusual.
Yeah. Okay, we had no problems.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, that, that has been approved.
Okay. Okay.
And that's all you're getting at. Any other questions about that? Water rights, water rate study, those are actually two different projects that we need to separate out. Water rate study, let's start. We've got a consultant that has some information and is starting to develop a program. And this is a counsel, a consultant who already approved, I think it was thirteen thousand dollars. It's not gonna take a lot of time, but soon we're gonna start getting into having to provide a lot of information for the team. And I'm kind of balancing out the budget process and, uh, you know, do that. But, um, the water rate study is in motion. The water rights portion of that is, is the city talking, Water Resources Division, and trying to get our additional water rights, remove water rights for the city. Uh, that one is gonna take a little bit more time for us, and we're gonna have to get some specialists in there. There were some interns that were available that specialized in water things in Oregon. They've all since retired. So we're still looking for that. That's gonna have to be an active project moving forward as well. But I don't have a lot of forward motion on that at the moment. Done the conservation plan, got the water loss prevention, prevention, uh, percentage project. I think seventy-five percent on that is, is also maybe a little high. There's still some studies we need to do and bring a contractor in to be able to do water detection in the city of Gearheart. We haven't gotten there yet. But that is on the list as well, and it should remain. With the water rate study project is to investigate the system development charges. And this is something that our consultant will also weigh in on for the city council. So you will be able to consider the possibility of system development charges for the city of Gearheart to help with our water revenue system. Any question about page one? So we're gonna keep the water meter replacement on there, water rights, water rate study. And, um, yeah, this page does not change that much. Page two. Definitiveness. Uh, I want to report McFadden. He's done some work on definitive maintenance, but we don't have a full-on project, uh, preventative maintenance program. At the moment, we've got a good solid one for the water treatment facility and that, but Mark is still giving time to work on the Gearheart preventative maintenance program. But again, this is one of the things that we want to concentrate in the operations of the city. We want to accomplish that this year. Uh, it's very important to making sure that we're doing things as efficiently as possible and things are in good shape. City's pretty small. We've got a lot of this in place, we just seem to bring it together and make it into one solid program. So we'll be working on that this year as well. Uh, sidewalk repair. We didn't go very far on sidewalk repair this year. Um, there are some areas that Mark has identified, but we haven't done a full one in the tour. Uh, I know that Merritt suggested that sometimes we have a whole group of people that are walking Gearheart all day long, and they can probably do some sort of tour of course too. And we welcome that kind of help. But this is something that, um, we need to improve upon. We do have one, um, project that has started, we're doing, um, sidewalk replacement here on Pacific Way. Um, we have signed documents with a person, an engineer to help us design it. And we've also hired a surveyor to start that, to give us a survey. And then we will be able to get a better price and know exactly how much sidewalk we can build. So that is rolling, that's happening. Um, Bill's gonna be like, why do you need an engineer to do a sidewalk?
I'm just worried, I mean, this sidewalk extension that you guys put on up here beyond the, the post office and everything like that, I think it's obtusive.
Is what?
Is obtusive. You know, I mean, this town's, you know, for seventy, seventy years or whatever it is, a sidewalk out here in Pacific Way has served the public just fine. You know, I realized that when it was put in, you didn't have the, the, uh, the handicap rules and regulations and everything like that, but, you know, I mean, if you, if you drive around this town and you've got people out there walking in the summertime, most of the people won't use a sidewalk anyway.
Yeah, I don't think there's a desire of the team to put sidewalks all throughout Gearheart. Um, you know, that sidewalk was included when we did the water treatment settlement, so it was just part of that project as well. Tennis for beach approach sidewalks we put in, um, that are along there. That, that was kind of a safety issue as well, enderage and, and the issues that we're having there. So, uh, we were able to accomplish that, but yeah, we have no desire to put any sidewalks in, but this is a repair issue of what we do have, uh, which needs some help.
Are they gonna, are they gonna take from the curb all the way to the, to the, um, south side of the sidewalk there and pay you all that?
Mm-hmm. For the, the piece that we're looking up on Pacific Way here on the, uh, south side from about, uh, across the street from Terror Hardest down to about the sweet shop is what we're looking for. That's what we were grant for. Uh, fun fact, we received grant for about a hundred thousand dollars for that. That was going to do a lot more sidewalk a few years ago. Um, but it's been pared down a little bit, and that's what we're. I'd like to keep that in those on the, uh, on the sheet. Um, upgrade water main on. This is something that does need to happen, but we're also waiting for an opportunity. Um, the pipes out there are old, but we may have some opportunities coming up depending on how the ODOT funding goes for the transportation system plan that we have. Community will be involved, but that would be the opportunity time to do water meter replacement, or excuse me, water main replacements down there. So that it's open. Highway's already being taken apart, we'd rather do it that way than having to repay the highway ourselves. So, so far, so good, it's adequate, it's running. We've also completed some loop systems around town that actually took a little bit of pressure off in that area as well. Or can take some pressure off, especially if there's a break. So we can keep it on, but I don't think we're gonna be able to get to that this year.
What's the twenty-five percent?
Um, I think that's transportation system's plan, the twenty-five percent, but we have a plan.
Get in there to, yeah. Get a plan.
Yeah, we have a plan.
Now, uh, my understanding when I was looking into all of that stuff was that, um, ODOT's gonna do their thing, and I, I already told you it's very important to me that when they tear that up, I fully support it while it's torn up. Let's do all of this because I, that's one of my pet peeves is when you, they put down a street and then somebody comes in two weeks later and tears it up and then does something else to it. But also along, along those lines, we have some of our own things that we have to do, um, that I think above the transportation plan as far as planning for when ODOT puts in whatever they're gonna put in, such as signage as far as you're entering Gearheart or you're leaving Gearheart, whether we want to do a lighting plan, uh, what kind of landscaping we want to have down there. And I think that's something that we should probably, um, include under that project as far as if you, if you want to tie them all together, because that's gonna, that's gonna require public input. You know, I would hate for us to design something and then have everybody come in and throw shoes at us because they don't like what we decide, let's let them decide.
That's a good part about the transportation systems plan, is it threw out a lot of our gifts, none that we're tied down to. And when we get to that in the funding process through ODOT, it'll be another conversation with the city council and the community if you're happy with it. So then we can figure out the best way to approach it and take care of some of those things. Lighting and landscaping is in some of those plans, signage I didn't consider, but I'm sure that we, we, that we could time it well.
Okay.
Okay, at the bottom of the page, the evacuation supplies and facilities, we're pretty good there. Inventory and organization is going on. Um, and we still have SARS emergency supplies, one of the project that we're working on that has to do with the power supply that's up on the water supply bar. Um, and we're just awaiting to hear if we won that grant or not that we, uh, signed up for, so. Um, hopefully that's pretty soon. Um, as far as other emergency supplies and projects, we don't have any, uh, coming up for this year that we could identify that we need to do. What we have identified more on this is trying to put a certain team back together. And get that going, and they had about three or four meetings and, uh, Division Chief Hodge is kind of working along with them. And so we're hopeful. Any questions? Workforce, affordable housing and the housing study, that's ongoing. It's not necessarily a hundred percent because that's something that we're continually having to work with. We are involved in that process through the county and the cities, learning some more information. But that will really come down to any changes are recommended to the planning commission, the city council. So we're just kind of waiting for those to come out, what might work for our town, and we'll make recommendations. Um, so like a small space housing is just a part of that. You know, as a possibility.
So do we? Excuse me, do we have land here that we can actually put in forest housing or?
Uh, is it city owned?
No. No, I mean, and that's the city, I mean, it just seems to me like everything east of the highway is pretty well developed within the city limits.
There are some large lots on that side, you know, single homers or single lot. Whereas all the other lots that were similar to that are now streets. You know, Bay Lane and all that, it used to be all individual people. Um, it's challenged, there could be. Um, and who knows what the future of, if there's a road boundary expansion or what have you, um, that's another possibility. There's not a lot of opportunity in Gearheart, no.
Well, it just seems to me that the cost of land, I mean, you know, when those people sell the five acre parcel or whatever it is. You know, also, you know, and the cost of development of it, and the cost of housing and everything. I don't, I, I'm, I mean, you know, I'm in the construction business almost my whole life. I don't really see where it's gonna be affordable housing.
It's gonna be tough, I mean, we got that project that Kerry Johnson's been working on, uh, down the way, we've got the floor place that's gone in. So people are starting to think about that and be able to figure out a way to make it work. But the rents are very high, but I mean, when you're looking at seventeen, eighteen and twenty-two hundred dollars a month as being affordable in this area.
That's a mortgage.
Yeah, it really is. And so, um, it's, it's a tough problem for Gearheart to solve, but I can say that so far the planning commission has been very open to assisting these people and getting this job done. Not getting in the way, but trying to make things work where it's appropriate. And we'll continue that. And then as this housing, affordable housing, uh, study and, and this program that we're in and some more information comes out, then there might be some other things for us to consider.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's like I said, Marjorie Marks, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's accounting why, you know, local, you know, can be seaside, Gearheart, Warrenton, Astoria problem. And I think, and you start talking to Martin Igoe.
And that's what we're working on, well, not necessarily Martin, but I know that his name has been thrown around.
Well, he's, he's got all, he's got just a whole heck of a lot of land up there.
But the counties and cities are together on this, and they are meeting about it.
And, and we struggled because of the septic system issue here, but we've done, we've, we've done some considerable things between us and the planning commission over the last year. I mean, all the winjammer is not quite a success yet from what I understand, it's, it's moving, I mean, we at least allowed that. We, there was thought that it needs to happen, and so we support it. Um, and then with that apartment.
The fall we parted.
Change up there, um, we have some more, some more, what are they, townhomes being built up here.
And there were accommodations made by the planning commission to allow that to happen a little bit easier, but without throwing anything out that was necessary.
Right, so I, I think we're do, we're doing what we can and, and I think this needs to remain on there just as a reminder that we need to continue using, you know, having that in the back of our minds for, remember, making decisions, all of us.
Yeah, and for right now, it's going to be, you know, making those decisions as they come up and being open to trying to provide some, you know, the sound. We even made changes in the commercials on seat one zone to make it, um, able to have housing above the businesses of new building.
That's a point.
So we've made, the planning commission's done, done some stuff recently. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for your help on that.
Yeah.
Okay, doing vegetation ordinance, this is something that we need to revamp a little bit, in particular, uh, the management. So I think this is a high priority for the city of Gearheart right now, you know, we're mowing, we just mowed recently, um, out there, but there's more that needs to be done, we need a better plan. I have a draft of a plan, uh, ready for the city council to look at. Um, and so when we're able to get that on the agenda, we can start working on that when you're ready.
So the moment, sorry, Ross, um, when you said just recently, in the last two weeks?
No. Yeah, that's a couple of months ago. Yeah, we're, we're mowing season right now.
Okay.
So that shut down, I'm not offering, I'm not giving any tree cutting permits, mowing permits until the end of July. And that's, that's aside, that's for the nesting, ground nesting season.
Awesome. So, I mean, I'm all in favor of you guys cutting grass down there because, I mean, we haven't had a grass fire threaten Gearheart since I put the fire road here.
Yeah, we've had a few.
But it's been, I mean, if you guys, the moment, it's a heck of a lot easier put out a slow-moving grass fire than it is in the northwest wind blowing. You know, so, I mean, I, I encourage that. My question is, for the people that live between Pacific Way and D Street, that home down there, are we getting their permission to mow in front of their houses?
No, they're doing that for us. There's, most of those properties are paying for that, our home, it permits that the city gives them to allow them to do that. Not only that, but we've also had really good success in people that live at the end where it is city property. They pay for more than half of that mowing that's been going through because they're also, it's just part of what the history of, uh, of some of those oceanfront homes were is when they used to come and visit, um, they'd send the kids out per day, pull all the scotch from them out. You know, that was just part of the tradition, well, that's gone by the wayside. We have more, so now they're helping us out by, you know, providing some funds. So we've had some pretty good public-private partnerships. So that, doing vegetation ordinance and management plan is, um, what we're looking at and, and then we're gonna have a future agenda, so we may be able to get to that. I've got a lot of work done with that already with the help of Crest as well. Uh, parks and trail master plan, we have that. It's finished, can always be changed. And, uh, all my sheet that I provided here, they will get into some of the projects that are in there that, um, that we talked about. Second line, uh, clean signs, Mark, this is something that the council has instructed us to do in the past. Um, cleaning, replacing a lot of the signs, we didn't get as far as we want to do this year, uh, of that as well. So I would like to keep that on and, uh, keep that as a goal. That needs as well. Uh, trees are raining, that's ongoing, the storms of recent were very helpful, we didn't want to cut them. But, um, you know, so far, so good, and we're pretty reactive to that, that we don't have any plans to take out many major slots of trees in here. The. I think it was last, this last summer or fall. There was a tree company that was trimming everything along the power line design. Chacked it out with the power company. In coordination with them, it's part of our um right away. So they were our.
Franchise.
Franchise agreements, thank you. Um, so the franchise agreements that we make with um uh the cable company, the power company and all that, they have permission. Um, to do some tree trimming to protect their lines.
Yeah.
They don't normally come to us with the exception of the power company. They always let us know what they're doing. Um, and power company uses some of those other companies. I can't even pronounce the law. That starts with an A. Thank you. Um, that's them contracting. That has nothing to do with the city. Um, although we're aware of it. I was curious if we like. Put in requests that there is, if we. Um, parks are, sorry, public works department has issues with trees in that area. What are the power lines that we make requests to them to come in and and do that to prevent a rent if. Yeah, um, maybe not under preventative, that's kind of the area they take care of. They do a lot of that for their work. But we do use three different contractors here in the city that are for major treatment removal, you know, that takes all the chipping, the larger laws that follow and things like that. We use them sometimes they get in contact with the power company and make sure things are safe. But yeah, we use contractors for probably ninety percent of the treatment level, not maybe more than fifty percent of the treatment level. Um, for what we do around here because we just.
Those guys are all local.
Uh, well, we, such as um big leagues, uh such as Arby Care and such as Quality Tree Justin Day. And we try to spread it out a little bit. Um, we do, but it also depends on how we add it there. And they take great care of us.
So, so Chad, um, getting back to when people call in and say, hey, here's an issue like the end of the street. I notice when I'm at the stop sign and I look right and left, I can't see oncoming cars. The bushes or trees need to be trimmed here. They called the city and then they start, are they triaging those based on this is a, this is a health and safety issue. We need to get to this. And then this is just a, you know, side issue, slightly, slightly thing or?
Most everything that's called in, we take care of.
Okay.
You know, um, because it could be branches come low or hanging dangerous. Or trees come over or something that's been overgrown. Some of the things public works guys, they have a, a system to where they occasionally push things back on the streets that always grow up and in. You know, Hager uh was third or second street, you know, those kinds of things. Um, but otherwise, uh, we try to take care of it immediately.
Okay.
Okay, so that's some of the things we're working and I'd like to keep those on. Uh, the next one is a fire station resilience prepara- uh preparedness. Um, I've got some more information. I'd like to talk about that a little bit about future project. Next few pages here after we get done with this.
So sort of back to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, which includes the fire station and relocation. The uh alternative power supply for going as far as what I was talking about earlier, we're just waiting for that grant to come through. Uh, gas fuel supply was complete. We have oak diesel and gasoline now. I think we have two hundred and fifty gallons of of gasoline and seven hundred and fifty gallons of diesel. Um, the seven hundred and fifty gallons is really set aside for the water treatment facility backup generator. But to keep that fuel healthy in turn, we occasionally fill our trucks up with it, uh fire department, the tractor. But that is our alternative uh power fuel supplies that we have and we feel like we're in much better shape than we were a year ago. So that's those sections. Next section is policy procedures, operation manual. That was part of the um uh plan is project with uh us in our handbook. That has been completed. That will need to be revisited. That's part of the process. This is some of the things that we need to take care of. So that's gonna be staying on in another iteration, but right now that's finished. So we're gonna take it off this too. Uh, reach path extension beyond your heart blue. Um, I have that as a project uh for the future. Uh, we just need to do some investigation. On potentially lengthening that trail. Um, when we have time, we can get into that project. It's, it's not a large priority for the city at the moment, but um we're always going to have possibilities. It's not a lot of way to make that through, so we'd be lucky to to have it done, but you know, we should take a serious look at it and get the people involved and talking about it. Uh, path maintenance clearing, that's an ongoing project with us. Uh, Duncan Crossing has been completed, that's finished. Other than I understand, there's a tennis shoe floating around somewhere over there. I'm gonna check on that tomorrow.
Actually, I meant to go, I I'm on my next walk, I'm gonna take something with me so I can collect it. You don't have to worry. I'll get it with, I'll get it by this time next week.
Thank you. I think that was mayor that mentioned that to me as well.
Yeah, I saw it yesterday and I was like, if I just had something, I could sweep it out and it's, it's actually floating pretty well right now because there's a lot of water.
But that is working really well. People enjoy it and I think that it's just kind of uh the path is starting to get more and really good uh on the other side as well. But there needs to be always maintenance clearing down on that. So that is okay. Next on page four is financial, cool versus hash. I think you solved that issue. Um, we had some extra comment and talk to us about what's best for your heart and that's what we're doing right now. And it seems to be working out pretty well. Um, and I think Justin would recommend the same as well. Uh, recommendations from the auditor, we've been working through those. Um, and that's just, that's an ongoing process. But uh this year's audit should be um really pretty good. Um, review budget statements when I see something we, uh, we just didn't accomplish that. Um, city hall, uh, city hall update remodel. Um, that's a project that I have on, something that I'd like to consider moving forward. Um, we need some more space here. We're all on top of each other and uh with as busy as we are, we are gonna have to talk about. What that might cost and some ideas to remodel this building a little bit better at work, a little bit better. Larger fire station idea did not go through obviously. And that was something we were holding back on the city hall. Because that could have afforded us uh some of the offices, such as the police and the fire to move up into wherever that is. That's still maybe in the future, but arguing is now. Um, we've got multiple people in single offices and it's just difficult. Very efficient. Self sustaining, community energy efficient. This is something near here to Florida enough. And um, you know, we don't have any particular projects. When we look at a new vehicle, we'll look at, you know, what the possibilities are. When we look at the opportunity to save energy and conserve, we'll look at those opportunities, but we don't have any projects. Uh, set aside for that right now. So I think that that's something that. Can remain, but it's something we're always going to be working on, but I, you know, right now I don't have the private responsibility council to recommend so. That includes the alternative fuel vehicles and I think that has to do with planning as well. For growth area, that's something to talk about uh as well. That's something that we're still interested in looking at. How can, should your heart expand? Um, and I think that's still on our radar to take a look at and we are working towards. We're currently working on it in regards to just getting information from DLCD and Peter and uh I'm trying to think of our next steps. All right. So we'll have a report. Dashboard metrics, not so much. We, we have this goal sheet. I don't think we celebrated enough. Um, but I, you know, Christine, I've been talking about this. Uh, we want to develop something that you could look at very easily. And know where the city is at with most of our projects. You could see that we're in the green or the yellow or the red depending on how well things are going and how we're more into what's going on. That's a goal of ours that we haven't accomplished yet. Stay. Each six. Our reports, we've got that pretty well. We've been missing public reports a few times, but we'll be back up on that. Quarterly council report giving council meetings. Um, we're doing that almost monthly. Uh, we're trying to clear that down a little bit so it doesn't take so much time. Um, but I think that's also part of the um. The metrics, the dashboard, that project that I was just talking about. Uh, including celebrating different department goals, council goals and. Uh, including project, project tracking. So those all kind of work together. And uh we want to keep those on this goal sheet because we want to make some. Positive moves towards the event. Uh, these planning commission ideas, these are added to the planning commission goals, so we just scratch those off for now. But I did include on the back of this what the planning commission goals are. Uh, it's on the very last page, just so you can understand some of the things they're working on. And they are working on some of the things that the city council was wanting them to look at. Uh, the comp plan review. Um, and uh some of the other things that go over here. Well, I guess it includes these items that are right here, updating your heart city charter. Also the comp plan.
Yeah.
Um, looking at updating that. Those are big projects. Do you have some of them stand?
No, no, I was just, I was going to ask about the comp plan because according to the one that we have online, it was last updated in twenty nineteen. But I was told very forcefully by somebody else that it's been updated since then. And and I know when we update it, we're supposed to submit it to.
DLC.
Else, yeah. So um I was just curious as to what our schedule is. Is it every two years we're looking at that to see if any changes need to be made? Or is there any kind of a regular schedule for for looking at that?
No.
Okay.
Not on the comp plan and not on the city charter. That is kind of on an immediate basis, but I, I think that. Work, what time, where should we revisit it? So just because it's not on an automatic thing, I I think that this is something that we need to accomplish and they're both very good jobs. Um, so we'll work with council, figure out what's important, you know, and then talk about how to get into that. But I don't have a plan. Contracting, we're done, we reaccomplished, uh, that had to do with uh budget and uh the city council passed that ordinance recently. Okay, on page seven, video document about your heart, your heart. Well, I haven't had time to get up the camera and take some photos. But what the planning commission has accomplished is they did put in I uh a uh, we have a brochure now, a card, if you will. That has information about our comp plan and who your heart is based on our comp plan. And using that as an education process, though, through developers that come into the city, we're sending it out. I think that Justin's been stuffing this already. We're sending these out to all of the citizens of your heart as well. And then we'll always have them here to give out and to make sure that people have, they understand kind of what your heart is about. It's a little educational process. Uh, I'm not saying that we're gonna do a video this year and I'd like to just kind of put that on the back burner, if you will. Um, unless it's really important to the city council or you can make that a bigger deal, but I think right now we're doing a big job. So video, but the fire was long. I have no care in the ceremony. Fireman's ball this time, I have saved your money uh for the t-shirts and sweatshirts and uh. It's just anyway.
Yeah.
Um, A two and riparian zones, tighten up the definition of the borders. That's something that belongs to the planning commission to start with. And just to give you an idea what that project is, it is on the goals. Um, that is looking at adding a riparian area to A two aquatic zone. That's something that is not necessarily. Needs to be done, but it needs to be investigated. Uh, as to whether or not that's a good idea. And that was something that the planning commission, especially Shane Hoppers, are interested in. Uh, case play equipment. Thank goodness. Done.
And I was over there yesterday and it was awesome. I love the book nook. I love the way that you did the parking because, you know, you can easily get from your car to there. If you're not able to traverse this hill over there. I think you guys did a good job.
It's been pretty awesome. They go on like every day.
Yeah.
What's your favorite play point?
Okay, well.
I think I saw. Nash is on the side as it's his favorite.
Merry go around is pretty cool.
The slide is kind of sketchy, you know, you go really fast and you fly off pretty quick.
Yeah.
Jerk. Jerk is pretty. You're on your back. You're like, you're laying on your back chips. I was looking at the merry go round like, do we, no way, quick. Um, actually, it's not. The, the paving and the parking, um, per the planning commission, when I went to them for a condition of use permit, they asked that we do not provide parking for the general public on that side. Um, because they wanted to protect the neighborhood um and and not turn into a parking lot. That parking area will be uh asphalted as soon as the back plant starts up and it will be uh for one, a parking space.
Okay.
And the only other recommendation we have is from the mayor is like maybe separate the puppy poop papers a little bit farther away from the library. And I think we can accomplish that as well. It seems to be a more juxtaposition and I agree. Any other questions about that? Okay, no new parts on the uh, their mind.
Oh, wait a minute, there is a sign. Tom Tease is gonna come in here the next month and ask us about our sign.
We're working on that.
Okay, okay. So I'm sure we have that.
That's, and we're also kind of working on a date for an opening. Um, and we've got an idea of kind of wanting to do that. I, I know we've got the um egg uh Easter egg hunt coming up. We're not gonna use that as a grand opening uh portion of that, but we're looking at a future bit here very soon. Uh, I talked to Berkeley about that yesterday and her dad and so they're in, so I'll work that out here soon.
But again, I know I could you wonder they've done it. At the last meeting and I appreciate you all getting that, getting that down. I think that's gonna be something really special at the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very promising. All right, so RV parking ordinance. That is an old goal that we did accomplish having to do with residential RV parking. Future parking ordinances are the garbage and things that had to do with what we're dealing with right now are back on the agenda. We're gonna be talking about that soon. We have a deadline from July one to enact some of these things. And this is part of, and some of you are not aware, I think, um, I talked to most of you. But we are working within return. Um, definitely signed the document, everything's gonna be helping us with, and we're starting with those meetings on Friday to help us with some ideas about homeless. And to help us change our ordinances so that they work within the current law.
So I was actually reviewing the RV parking ordinance tonight in my book of ordinances. So is it because of the circuit, Ninth Circuit Court that we have to change it?
Uh, well, I think that that was the impetus and then to work also with ORS, Oregon of the Vice Statute as well. And that's why I, we're inviting this attorney, his name is Chad Jacob. And uh he used to work for the big award in cities because I mean attorney, he comes from San Francisco and dealt with, he was a city attorney for San Francisco. Um, he's been around here for a long time and he's got some good experience, a story of high recommendations.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a little meeting with that on, uh, just with a few counselors, the mayor and they aren't going to attend that. And not to get too sideways, but also on that day, there's a meeting coming up within the county with all the emergency managers. City managers and some staff to start discussing on the ways that this money is gonna start coming to us and how we can come together and figure out some plans. So these next two meetings are gonna be great. I don't have any report on. On the agenda for those at the moment, but.
So I guess what I'm asking is then none of our parking ordinances will be in, can be in effect because of the homeless issue.
Well.
It's not that they can't be in effect. It's just that the Ninth Circuit has said it's illegal to penalize or to criminalize. Certain behavior for folks that have no place else. And and so, and again, that's a conversation for another. So it doesn't mean that our ordinances are no longer any good. It just means in their application, we have to be.
Aware.
We have to be careful and and I think there's gonna be some things that we need to do, but we really do need the legal advice before we. We do anything. So that's as much as I'd like to say on it right now.
Freedom beat another loss.
No, it's not to say that we won't be able to do things. It's just, you know, it, we need to end and. I think. The, now that the county is getting interested in working as a county, it's gonna be better for all of us because this is, this population is um. They're much more organized than people work, than that people understand. They communicate very well and they move from place to place. And uh what we need to be doing is working together and and have systems that we're, we're all feeling similar things or learning from each other what's worked and what hasn't worked. So I think that's great that Chad's getting involved.
And we will have some more to do. And so, for sure, not sure exactly what it's going to be, but I'm looking forward to learning more. Which kind of includes those three things. I know your noise ordinance contractor work hours was big thanks to. Right, Lauren. Councilwoman. Page eight, your hearts, speaking of red. Your heart zip code project is. I'm not sure. It's in the federal government. We have put all the information forward. We made the application. Now it stays within USPS. And I don't have a lot of information to report, but I will. We're starting to get in on that again, but it's it's just a full process. Legacy tree project. And I need to make an apology to the city council about trees as well. I think the mayor brought this up to me as well. You know, I don't know if this is the right time here, but. Sharon should have been on the agenda for today's work session, but I just got buried and I forgot. We were working with Sharon on it. We have made some formal motion, but you asked me to do it. I did not do that and for that, my apology. But. I would like to ask you if you, next week after next, during the city council meeting. If you would mind potentially getting together. I haven't affirmed everything out, potentially getting together at six thirty. And having a small work session prior to the city council. Next month.
I can do that.
Yeah, Carrie, that doesn't work.
It'll work.
Okay. So I would like to try to schedule that. Christie will get ahold of you. She's aware of it. She's trying to put some things together. I think we've got all the information we need now. And I think we're ready for a good conversation.
I kind of want to add because I was working on this for a while. And one of the things that you need for a legacy tree project, legacy trees are trees that have a history like. George Washington slept under this tree or this was planted by Abraham Lincoln. Those are legacy trees. And as far as I know, your heart doesn't have any historical trees. I mean, maybe we do. I just don't know about.
We know how. That's room. There is some history that's got room.
Yes. Want to just let you know that that's what a legacy tree is.
So it's not a historical tree. It's a legacy tree. It's got something.
Historical.
It's has some value to the history of your heart and so, yes, okay. Well, we have a lot of historians in your heart that we could probably put it out to the public and ask.
And that would really help with the project.
Yeah, and I think Sharon Hopper is also interested in her part of the legacy trees, take some of the most beautiful trees in your heart. And look at trying to figure out a way to protect them out of process.
That you can still do that, but I'm just saying you can't call them a legacy tree. Just that's just thrown out there.
So we should drop the legacy.
Well, I mean.
We call it.
You could just call it a tree board. What would it, what they're, no joke. No, it's, it's just don't, I am all tree board jokes, but.
I think the planning commission is gonna be talking about the tree and the tree permitting process.
That would be good.
Next meeting potentially. So that's on the radar.
Is it? It's not on the agenda. But it might be. Is that what you mean by?
Correct. We got quite a lot on this next agenda coming up with some zone change issues. So not sure how they prioritized it, but it's. On the radar.
It is.
It is.
Okay.
And this would be making improvements to the tree cutting permitting process. Kind of. I grew downtown business committee. I guess Centennial Park's kind of in there. We had some forward motion on that. We were getting together during the COVID period of time. Right now, we don't have a really good association with downtown in your heart. You know, this is something that we have also left up to them to try to come together as a group. And, you know, make some recommendations or be involved in the city. But I think that we're gonna see more of this, you know, with the potential of the incoming, you know, good times getting started. The store has been purchased. And we have developers looking at the vacant lot that they own it and they're trying to figure out ways to put that vacant lot together. So I think there are some things that are happening. For downtown as well. We're just gonna have to be very careful on how we develop that. But I don't have anything to report on there and I I don't know that we need to keep that in our task list now, but you can make recommendations to us when we get done with this list. Culver, Pacific Way in the Acoxy. This is something that Carrie dropped to us four years ago. And we have made a lot of progress on looking at our culvers and seeing how we can improve them both for the health of the river. And for the resiliency of your heart. But what we have done is we've been working with Noah, with the County Watershed Council. And he has identified a grant that is available to the city and it's a pretty big potential grant. And he is beginning to write that and wants to work with the city and allows us to do it forward and help them that. So I'll order a report in the future. I don't know exactly what the timeline is on that, but this is something that Noah discussed with me about a month and a half ago. And so I thought that is positive. Movement towards that. Water bomb on the five.
Three years.
Story of the Jones. I think we got. We have three years on one, three years and four and a half, I think, is where we're at. That's where we're getting pretty close. That'll save people a dollar twenty seven per thousand. Coming up. So we're getting very close on this one. There's no need to. Especially right now. There's no need to refit them. We're in pretty good shape. Update codes and ordinance book. That's a big project that we've been talking about. We have two different books that we work out of and one of them is exactly a hundred percent. So we are.
Is that a hundred percent complete? Hundred percent what?
I, well, we've got all the information. It's just not a hundred percent together.
Right. So when we go to our code book, we're looking at. A code that may be obsolete and not even there anymore because we've done something and we don't have an updated book.
Not necessarily a codebook that you folks should have. There's an older codebook that has a lot of kind of subordinances that didn't make it into.
Right. The ones that are still active. Right.
Yeah, from a long time ago. And nothing really consequential and they're still in effect and we still use them. But to get that, to get what we intend on doing is getting all of our documents digitized. Bringing this codebook and these ordinances to a company that specializes in this and getting them all online searchable with hyperlinks, chapters. And all that. So very simple for you and us and the residents of your heart to be able to go through that. So that's something that's important to us. I don't have a timeline for that right yet, but it's. It's up there.
It's gonna become more important as we have two police officers in town trying to figure out. You know, what they can force them when they can, so.
Great. Which will happen a little too. Audit staff, ongoing. We have the audits. This is more about changing our auditors and I don't forget, this is people on here for right now. Goals list from the city commissioner, new successful question mark, fire station, well, that didn't work out very well. I wanted to say, maybe it was thirty, was it thirty-six percent done? But yeah, this is something we need to talk about. Dashboard council goals and goes on track, great, fifty percent. I think we're twenty-five percent towards that project. I think we're close to fifty percent on the projects that we're working on. But I don't have a good system to show you that right now. That's part of the debt. Successful changes in staff due to retirements with basic big news, fire station, and we're still having challenges with this part of it that we are on, we're rolling towards that. As a matter of fact, we're getting close to a police officer date to where we can start interviews and the council is gonna be involved in that this year. I think currently we've got four candidates and we're trying to set that up for near the middle to end of next month. Is when that would work best. We have fire, police chief position out. I've received one so far that I know of, but. They did incorrectly, so we got that straight in the way. I have gotten an update from the company that we're using. On whether or not they've received any at the moment, but that is ongoing. It started, it's out, it's posted, and I've had some calls and people that are interested, so.
You're referring to applications. You've received one application?
We did and we weren't supposed to.
Right.
It was supposed to go directly to them. And I haven't talked to them today about whether or not they've received any other applications, so I don't have anything to report, but that's something we'll be doing. Planning budgeting and billing system, we accomplished that with Angelina, so that was going to be removed. Implementing recommendations from the park committee, talk about that in one of the next documents. Determine how the city's commitments to the organ solutions help project on impact, building home spaces, consumer education, et cetera. Just today, we had our very last organ solutions meeting and it went really well. This is the organ solutions is done now. Now press is going to be in charge of the commitments and they're gonna help the cities through some of these commitments. Including things like the potential calling or making changes to our fence ornaments or. You know, we've already got the non-feeding ordinance, you know, sorts of things, public education is a part of that. So now that that is finished, we're gonna start putting right in the road. I don't think that there's any particular goals for the city council in that.
Let's go on the planning condition first, all right?
They've been kind of talking around a little bit, but they just haven't taken the time yet. But now we've got, I think. A support system that's gonna continue to move that forward. In Crest, continues a lot and she's been hired by organ solutions to keep it moving. Code enforcement officer, Ms. Rita, this is something that has improved with us. With Angelina, she's tough. And I think that right now you don't have the capacity to be able to hire another employee at the moment, nor the space. But we have seen improvements of some projects that we're working on, but with Angelina in place, things have gotten better.
Do you know how much time or what percentage of time she spends on code enforcement?
No, I don't, but I do know that that's going to be a topic of here in the future, something that Justin brought up and that we need to work on is to redo our. Job descriptions so that they work a little bit better. And that's when we'll do some investigation on those. But it's not a huge amount, really, her concentration right now is in building and planning. Sure, but she does, she's created helping with code enforcement. So I think we should take that off now. I don't think that, look at, you know, I I don't know, and that's up to the council, but I don't think that at the moment we need to look forward to hiring another person. I'd like to try and do it with the team that I have.
You have my permission.
The rest of those are half.
And so the lower one we can take off also.
Yes. Cause we hired, still training the finance assistant, she's training me as well. But she's been doing a great job. I'm super happy. Much different. That's good, man. All right. So that's what we've been working on. Each two of the white dot. We'll let you know on some of the things that we're interested in. So dollars answer estimated, some of them are just wild guesses. And we can get more deep into what it is, anything important. But if there's something in here that you would like to talk more about or you want to identify as being important, please stop me and say this is something that we're very interested in as well. Because I can prioritize those a little bit higher. We're looking at, you know, the financial software. I already talked to you about that. We're gonna kind of hold off on that for a moment till we get things fixed. Which includes cleaning your furnaces some up, remodeling for additional office space, carpet, furniture. I'm not sure exactly what that's gonna cost here and how we can push this building up, but I'm gonna start doing some investigation on what that costs. Currently, we have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars into our building reserve fund. So we do have some funds to accomplish some of this. I don't know if it's gonna take two hundred thousand dollars, but we do need to expand. Replace shingles on roofs and eaves. That's already kind of been started. We've got the, you know, some gutter quotes. We're still not sure we're gonna be able to put. Cedar shingles back on. As they're a little difficult to find and expensive, but we need to get that going on. We have some rock repair here on the side of the building that we need to take care of. We want to repay the city hall signs, fire department signs. And then the job description project and the updating salary schedules are two projects that. We need to work on. And those are high, both of those are very high priorities for us. Please job description, all of them. Yes, because we've had a lot of change over the last few years, yeah. And what we're doing is working, but it's not perfect. Some people have a heavy job load and they need some. So things have changed, you know, the way that we do business has changed and it's busy as we are. So it's something that comprehensive project where we kind of take things apart potentially, you know, we may look at. And Justin's idea was to look at a, a person to kind of help us with some of that. That's a project that's important to us. And the update salary schedules is, I'm wanting to be fair with people to make sure that salary schedules work correctly. And then also make sure that we are competitive, which is tougher in a little town, but at least be more competitive as well.
And if I can interject in that, in my experience. That's kind of a thing that you should do. Again, as part of your usual checks and balances, every once in a while you do a job analysis. What is everybody doing as far as their workload? To to make sure that you're running as efficiently. And certainly in a city like this, where we haven't grown a lot of employees. But we've grown a lot of, you know, the public and the public is putting more demands on the same number of employees and. So that is something because if in the future we decide we do need. More staff, then that would be the starting point that that would identify this is what you need to start thinking about in the future and start saving up for. I, we recommend that you do this. And it's usually an HR type person to do that. It would be, I, I recommend that.
And our insurance company has a great HR program that helps us with some of these, well, helped a great, it was a little tough through the handbook situation, but. They might be able to help us as well.
Yeah. And that's all part of, again, keeping your your staff healthy and happy too, which is big in a, you know, in a community like this where we're all competing for the same employees. And we want you to stay happy.
Hey guys, Scott and a consultant cost, Jeff.
Not yet.
No. Just, we're, we just got a lot less. So now we'll be working towards it and through budget season, we're gonna have to do some things, but it's a larger project. Any other questions about city hall, the administration portion, or any ideas that you have that you think that the city should add into that section? We have time tonight. It's not the only night that we can do this.
I like the progress that you, sorry, I like the progress that you all have made with the. The online stuff, but it's still not super easy to navigate through that. So I think that if that's not on this year's list, it needs to be on next year's list. We need to get a professional in here to work on. On that because everybody, everybody's online now and they should be able to pop in and look. You know, pull up our website and find information about code. You should be able to find, you know, some of the stuff that I struggled to find when I first moved here. As far as can I cut my tree down, can I not cut my tree down? I had to come down here and have some meetings that didn't make any sense to me at the time. So I I like that we're doing that. I like the progress that you're making with the blog. I'd like to keep it going in that direction. Whether that's a part-time employer or full-time employee somewhere down the road, that's, that's probably in the future also.
Well, as I said, we have a company that can do it, the company that's currently doing our website, and they do have improvements that they want us to make.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to put in a search function where I can put in something I want to search for and have it find it for me. Because it's really, really hard to navigate our system as far as that goes because for somebody like me who's not super computer.
I was hinting on that with that document. I was hinting upon that with that document. Um, I'm digitizing all of our documents, it's like that, that's going to be one of the first steps. Make some real old ordinance, people should be able to.
Well, and also if you do that, it relieves the burden on our staff too, because I'm sure a lot of the calls that they're getting are, you know, this, this, that. And I'm sure my folks are trying to do the research and it would be a lot easier for them to just be able to go online and find it there too. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, I'll put that down, I'll update that on this as well.
Okay, Chad, I want to finish this by third. That's all.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have some of the park items in here, trails in, all parks and dunes, less than a dollar. These are items that came out of the Parks Master Plan of some of the things that people wanted to do. Less than a dollar was left alone, you know, the only thing I was going to put in there is don't do anything but irrigate it to get rid of the stickers potential. So that's a potential project. Uh, trails in, these are all the projects I'm not recommending, I'm getting them all done this year. But I think that some of the, the important parts for steps in the ramp to improve accessibility from the zip way. It may not take forty thousand dollars to do that, you know, that's the high side. But I think that's one that maybe should come up.
Right.
In its importance.
Three handrails, gravel and three two-by-six on edge as steps. And let them lock down, walk up, just.
Your hardwood natural way.
No, we don't need concrete.
I agree with you. I was thinking about that before this, but when we had this conversation today, it struck a chord.
Yeah.
I think that we did a lot of good work with the playground equipment, so they look like it was more natural on that. And so why throw much? Yeah. So those are things that the planning commission and the city council are going to have to kind of come together. This is what they want in the future and we've got to figure out a way to get that to do. Any questions about that, chose in? Lateral garden, that's on, I can see your D E. Well, a little tiny part, one of the smaller parts in your heart, it's about uh, quarter of the size of this room. And uh, uh, just some landscaping and potentially bench also. I did have the bench on here with a cost, but as Mayor pointed out, we had a lot of people waiting to pay for benches, so why did I? So we'll be looking at that in the future. All parts, uh, we talked about additional trash receptacles, that's something that I think we can accomplish this year. Siage of parks necessary, but especially trailheads to beach, those signs are pretty old and coming apart. Some of them are apartment forsters, or excuse me, uh, parks, park things. City approved three part bench types, we're working on that, I've got somebody helping me, uh, kind of looking at different bench types. But I did want to tell you that we moved the dune benches west and the maintenance of the benches. Uh, just found out today that uh, it looks like we just got a donation for about twenty thousand dollars. To have somebody come in, look at refinishing those benches, clean up the area around them. And then potentially also depending on park and recreation, uh, Department of Oregon moved them forward from where they are now because of the dune creation. And they give them all farther ahead. So that donation came from Charles Che, his foundation and River Che. And uh, so we're still looking at the details, but I just found out about that today.
We need to get a letter of thank you to.
I'll just see that, I know it's coming and then we'll work out some details.
Okay.
Dunes, ongoing, well, maybe not just we remove all, we always talk about advising that dune management. This department accreditation, some of our goals. I'm not sure exactly how it's going to cost, it might not be that much, but the time and effort is going to be a bigger, a bigger project, and then accreditation will have our, you know, future police officers with the training thing. And then also, this is the project that our new fire or police chief, you know, will be able to take on as he gets settled. So I don't have a timeline or that, that's going to work as a first way to find this. Um, and along with that is the department policy update, getting involved in Lexible. Um, that's a company that puts together procedures. We've been working on that in the fire department for three years. It's a big project that the fire department's been trying to do on their own, uh, through volunteers and things like that, so it saves some time. Through that policy update fairly quickly, I, I think those are going to be the first two major things that they want to work on. Which includes the training program as well and then remodel the offices, that's just making it work a little bit better for them. Hopefully being able to figure out some more space. You intend to have three officers, potentially more in the future. Um, so we'll have to talk about how we can do that. Any questions about police department or anything else that you think we should add? Okay, fire department, um, we are looking, uh, what they are looking at is feasibility and devising a plan for replacing two vehicles that need to be replaced. Uh, twenty-nine, twenty-three is one of our fire engines that is aging out. And twenty-nine, thirty-five is a fire tender that is also aging out, uh, and is, is quite missing, those both need to be updated. Um, grants, number one. Number two, we can't get the grants for those, that becomes critical, we'll have to go uh, potentially over. For like a, what we've done in the past, if we can modify your loan, pay that off fairly quickly. Um, to buy a, a truck, but lots more information, we're going to work on that. Yeah, and we'll open their offices and um, replacing the city fire station. How we go about that? We just start putting together some planning, is that a citizens community to start with? Change that process or it works, it's, it's much more open for people, people have much more opportunity to talk. Um, those are things I'm looking forward to. So I don't know if that's on this year, but it's something uh, that I think we need to continually be thinking about.
What do we do with the fire agents and the fire tender that haven't been replaced?
What's we're done with?
Yeah.
Uh, we sell them. And sometimes we give them away, but I think that there's still some value to these. There are departments around Oregon, so this is a liability issue. And replacing these vehicles both for insurance services, uh, to set your insurance rates. We have to have the appropriate equipment, that's not too old. It's also FPA rules that the equipment is here replacing because it just does age out. There are departments that have no insurance. They have to use old equipment, they don't have an opportunity, they don't have the money. So that's usually where these things get sold. We have helped with our previous, most you give that to Hamlet, they're still even. I don't know how, but those guys are duct tape, you know, they're great. Um, but yeah, so. Any other questions about the fire department?
Um, yeah, we, I, that definitely needs to stay on there as far as time, and we'll have to look at that. There was a previous, in this Congress, there was a previous bill introduced before the House in, I think it was twenty-twenty. Uh, um, that would work towards authorizing grants, FEMA grants, to cities like us that need to build critical infrastructure. And it just pretty much died on the line, it didn't have bipartisan support. How, although, however, um, my, my brother-in-law's a congressman and he said that that just came across his desk. It's getting a little bit attractive, they're looking at it. Maybe the reason they're looking at it is because an almost identical bill was introduced in the Senate um, just before the election. So it's something we need to look on, something like that usually takes a bit of time to get going. Um, but that's something that we need to watch as we're going through this and we need to, you know, our timeline needs to fit in with. If, and I'm not saying that we would qualify for something like that, I'm just saying that those are the kinds of things that we need to keep an eye out for. So we need to, we need to do it well, but then we also need to do our, get our timing down. And I, I think we are going to need citizen involvement this time to me.
We're really looking forward to having, there's zero, you know, money available for these kind of projects, so they are very expensive and hard to fund.
Well, as I get more information on that, what I'll, what I'll do is, is let everybody know what we can do to make sure that we're putting pressure on folks. Put pressure on to get something, to make them understand that we want bipartisan support for that, we want that to happen for us.
Thank you. Uh, public works, this is in addition to the things that are already on the projects list that we have here. Um, but one of the things that's important to us this year is to certify and train uh, backup water treatment operator. Um, this is something to, you know, as a backup mark, currently these guys can run the system. But uh, you know, for short periods of time, but we need to find uh, or promote a person that is fully certified and is focused on water treatment facility. So more to come with that, um, because there might be, need to be some budgetary adjustments in the future, who knows if this is an additional point of that. Those are something that we, we need to work on. While we're replacing, we talked about, while we're studying, we talked about water loss. Um, and the last is the security upgrade from water treatment plant. Um, I'm working on some quotes for that now, but the security does definitely. Um, science and things that are already on here, is there anything else that, uh, you know, for public works that's on your mind at the moment?
I just have a comment. I met with Mark Patton a couple of years ago, because I wanted to tour of the water treatment plant and what he does is so amazing, is so technical. I, and I asked him, don't you ever get to go on vacation? And he said, even then, he, he knows that he could be a call away spot. I approve getting a replacement or a backup for him.
Yeah, it, it's also part of, you know, for the future, you know, we would like to extend transmission when, you know, Mark decides to retire, which Mark retired, I think six or seven years.
Yeah, but he did was just amazing.
You talk about a full-time, are, are, um, a person that will be definitely more focused on there. Whether or not it's a full-time, I'm not sure if that's been quoted at the moment, because we do have a small team, that we all have to be multi-passive. And so if it'll be a person that will work along with Mark, make all the decisions, work with the maintenance, work with, you know, him. Since then, also be available to help dig a ditch when necessary.
Kind of like our chief of police is kind of there.
Right. Kind of like everybody around here.
Yeah.
They have multiple jobs.
Yeah, supervisor gets to work.
So that's how it works. And again, just to let you know, this is not a final complete, this can be adjusted at any meeting or anytime. So if you come up with ideas, this is a lot of information, it's more about trying to get it out there and, and get you thinking about these things. Uh, under planning, again, we're talking about that, reach path extension, usability study is now on the goals list, I'm not sure if we prioritize that, there's a lot of challenges with it. Urban growth boundary review, that's some of the things that we've kind of peeked around in, just trying to figure out how uh, and where and what the potential is and whether or not to save gear or can you even do it depending on our growth rate and our building process. Um, but I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered in there and there's some tensions again. Comprehensive plan update, that's a big project, that's been in many public meetings, that's a lot of um, uh, getting the public involved. Talking about concepts and things, so I'm not sure that we're going to be able to accomplish that or get it started this week, but I think it's something that we'll start thinking about and we'll be parsing out smaller pieces of it. I'm not sure how to do that, but that's also planning condition. Parking camping or this, as we talked about, zip code project we talked about as well. On the last page. It's not an official, they have. Something where they're redundant, but they use other things that they've been working.
How often do you, do you present this to us? Since I've been here, I, I think I saw maybe my first city council meeting and then I've seen it now. Do you, I would like to see this four times a year so that we can, you know, not forget what our goals are and look to our measurement, see if we're, we're going to make progress or we're not making progress.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, that's, that's a priority, I think, for all of us, as part of that dashboard project as well. Whether or not it's quarterly or that the goals are laid out in a little bit easier situation, a better list. Um, and if it didn't include monthly.
Well, I mean, and this isn't an unusual document many agencies use, this, this would be good enough for me until you have some progress on that. If you could just, you know, quarterly give it to us with our city council packet and so that we can just at least look at it. We don't even have to spend any time talking about unless there's something very important to talk about, but just so that we are forced to not forget this and, and know what's going on.
So that's what I had, I teach you an idea, some of the things we're working on uh, for the city. And um, this is also your opportunity to talk about some things that you would like to work on, if you come up with any. Again, this is your only opportunity. But some of these things and the priorities of them are going to help us with our financing process as well. A lot of these things are into what my desires are as far as operations for the city, and the improvement that we want to make to our operations. And that's really what I want to focus on this year. But it doesn't mean you don't have time or energy or capacity to look at some other things when you're interested. So. Working from that, we've identified the goals that we have. What do you have there? Or what are your comments? Would you like it?
Yes. I'd like to be able to sit down out of this meeting and look at what I've written on my papers and then start marking things and then come back and say, well, I like this and I don't like that. I give this a three and this a four, this a number one. I mean, we did discuss that, but that's what I would prefer. I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do.
And that's an excellent idea. We go away, we think about it ourselves and then we score what are the priorities. Um, I think we need to talk about where the pole courts. Cause that's, you are, we're not going to have.
Well, that is going to be up to Wally and his crew as well. Um, what we've told them, I mean, so we're applying for the grant to refinish. But Wally and his group are going to have, they're going to come to us, we're going to assist them on going for a conditional use permit. You know, to potentially change those courts and have those meetings. Um, we haven't gotten there, but I have had multiple conversations with Wally, telling him what that looks like. And he has the energy to get that going, uh, then we'll get started on it. And that's a planning commission starts there. Um, so that process is kind of what we do on a daily basis anyway, so that's rolling, we're just kind of waiting for it to log out.
Right, and that's, that's a three-month process of conditional use, with tinging and everything.
Once we, you know, get the application, then it's a forty-five day process until a meeting. And then you have your meeting that goes through and potentially it's done in one or two. So yes, it could turn into a three-month process. My conditional use for the park only took one month, but you know, we got it in forty-five days in advance, got to one meeting, got it done. Um, I think that pickleball is going to be a little bit more exciting.
Hmm.
Um, but regardless, when you say we are applying for it, the city is applying for the grant?
Yes.
With your assistance?
No.
Okay, so that will be ours. So regardless of whether we change anything up there, it will be resurfaced, we'll protect at least what's existing.
If we get the grant.
If we get the grant, okay. And if not, we'll figure that out.
Yeah. You get the grant and then we start heading toward pickleball, we'll figure that out.
Okay, so again, uh, maybe that's something that we need to add, add somewhere on there, because regardless of whether we get the grant or not, the, the surface up there right now, um, the longer we leave it, the more damage it's going to be.
Yeah. On planning.
So let's come up, hope for planning and if it doesn't work, then we'll.
Yeah, I think that's good. So that's a lot of information. I think what we'll do is we'll complement this and we'll get those to these additional items that are on there. In a way that you can check them off. And then add in any others that you have. And then we'll look at the agenda and see if we can have this as a discussion point during the next city council meeting, which is almost in two weeks. I don't know if that's enough time for you, but we are getting into the budget season, so I would like to have a small conversation during the next city council meeting. Um, to get started.
Okay.
If that's alright with you folks.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay.
I say with this motto.
Okay, apologies for sharing those truths. We're going to get there. I'm sorry I didn't get that happen, but uh, we'll get there. Got a lot of our money.
Anyone have anything else? Chad, do you have anything else? Jeremy?